It is five o'clock. Okay, call this meeting to order. Howard Haggard.
Good.
Diane Jordan, here. Todd McDaniel.
Here.
Chad Sargent.
Here.
Brenda Walters.
Here.
Okay, in the forum. Recognition of guests, special meeting, we still have guests, so thanks for the participation. Item number four, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment and/or postponement of the opening review, selection, rejection and/or awarding of bids submitted for the Mako Road resurfacing project. Any discussion? Shall we open these and then do some discussion?
Give them open.
Okay, um, we've got two bids. Um, I'm gonna read these. Yep, we're gonna open these sealed bid for the Mako Road resurfacing for the town of Ho Chi Minh, Oklahoma, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at four thirty P M. I hope this is the first of many. Okay, R A P, Route Construction, Sugar Hill Road, Texarkana.
Say R A P.
R A P.
R A P.
I got stripped to help you, I couldn't help.
Yeah, okay, hold on, I'm gonna let Jeff look at this. I'm gonna read our instructions here.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got the name, we want that total amount.
This is the written, this is the written amount and then that is the total amount for.
Okay, so their bid is four hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and nine cents. Okay.
That's R A P.
R A P. R A P. And then Jeff's gonna take all of this, here's their, um, their deposit, do they call it, what do y'all call that, a deposit?
That's a bid bond.
Bid bond, bid bond, I knew, I knew deposit wasn't right. Okay, so he's got his bond there. And then Jeff's gonna take all these and.
Put it, put everything back with his envelope?
Yep, that's probably a good idea.
So we don't lose anything? But then I'll take, I'll take those in and.
Yep.
Before you poke it back in there, can you say the number one one time?
Yep, four hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars and nine cents. Jeff's gonna, we're gonna run through the rest of our agenda, Jeff's gonna go back there and go through all this and then. No, that's my piece, thanks. Okay, our second sealed bid is from Schirali. Can you spell that please? S C H I R A L L I, Schirali Construction Corporation. Somebody know if that's pronounced right?
I think that sounded.
Sounds a little attached.
There's a few phonics here.
Okay, it's a pretty fat one. Okay, they are.
They sent the whole packet back.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, there, just that page, go to the next page, and then that should be, there it is.
Yep. This is, uh, let me make sure I spell the name. S C H I R A L L I, Schirali. They're out of Wilson, Oklahoma, that's what I was kinda looking for, these are out of Texarkana, they're out of Wilson. And their number is four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred dollars. Four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred dollars and forty-nine cents. Okay, I'm looking for a check.
I'll, I'll.
You can look more closely, see if it might be attached to.
Something hidden in there?
To something, yeah, I just quickly.
Jeff can get that.
Yeah.
Can I see your list? No.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you for coming down and helping us with this.
Quick question, if they did not send that bid bond and.
If the, if the check for the bid bond, that means they're non-responsive, you can waive it and expect them to have it in depending on, but that's strictly up to you all after that, I can, I'll make a recommendation of whether they're responsive or non-responsive, but then, and I'll give you the reason why they're non-responsive, and then you can take in consideration amongst yourself and say, we wanna go with them or not go with them.
Gotcha.
Adam, do you have anything else on that before we move forward?
I just tabled that and we will revisit once the engineer finishes the tabulation.
Okay, so, we are tabling the rest of item number four.
I make a motion that we tabled item number four until the engineer completes the tabulation process.
We have to, we have to.
Do a roll call, so you have to do a roll call for that?
Table it, we do it. I'll second it.
Yeah, there's a second by Todd, roll call vote please. Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan. Yes. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. We'll come back to that. Okay, item number five, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment and/or postponement on the approval of a master service agreement, M S A, with benchmark engineering firm as submitted by Charles Hinkle for services related to the Mako Road Task Order Project. Any discussion? Adam, you wanna?
Yeah, so, uh, the idea behind this M S A is that benchmark should be providing inspection services on the Mako Road project as well as any other road projects as needed as we continue to move forward with maintaining our roads and bringing them up to a standard quality. Charles, would you like to introduce yourself to the board and?
Sure.
Talk a little bit about some of the services that we can expect to see out of our Mako Road project?
Absolutely. Um, so, as you guys probably already are aware, we're working on the two fifty-nine project here nearby, so we're moving in a laboratory to do civil engineering testing. This means that we'll be able to test concrete, aggregates, asphalt, really you name it when it comes to installing a road. So that puts us really close with a very high-grade set of equipment and skills in order to be able to do this task for you guys. Essentially, anytime there's a road that's installed, we can make sure that it's got proper densities beneath the asphalt before the asphalt's installed, ensure that the asphalt is up to the grades and specifications that's required by contract, which can end up saving a whole lot of money in the long run. It's easier to be able to say, hey contractor, you made a mistake on this material whenever you've got proof in a, in evidence from tested samples from someone that's certified in Oklahoma to do so, so. That's what we're capable of, and then obviously, of course, making sure that we're not just covering up something out there that's gonna end up being a problem in two years. You guys are spending a lot of money on roads and it's best if you don't have to do them twice.
It's like our investment.
Absolutely.
You will work with whoever wins the bid, like if you wanna go out and look so that they're not, you know, laying that asphalt before you had a chance to go and look at the base?
Right, yeah, we'll be in direct conversation with the contractor throughout the course of the project. If there's something they're gonna be doing out there, we'll be aware of it, and if there's testing involved or required with it, we'll be making sure that it's getting done properly.
And you're not so close, aren't you?
Yeah, and we're close.
That's, that's fantastic, I think that's a good one.
Do you find that your, um, your engineers versus your specialists and technicians are doing majority of the work?
No, uh, it's the opposite. Typically, it's our technicians that will, well, really, it's our specialists that do a lot of the work, but when it comes to the number of hours per week, for instance, um, your specialist will, on a job of this caliber, you're probably looking at them working somewhere between ten or fifteen hours a week. An engineer would be involved somewhere between five or six hours a week. And then your technicians would be involved somewhere around ten hours a week as well, so. The strategy is to limit the engineering time and be as, uh, give, the engineer's role is to make sure that the specialists and the technician are doing things properly, and then the ones that are actually out there doing the work is the technicians and the specialists.
So when they get that bid, you guys kinda work hand in hand with them, or do they present you a plan and then you guys just, just check them?
Yeah, so we've been presented a plan from the designer.
Yeah.
And we'll be having conversations with the contractor through, before we have the project, at the pre-work, pre-construction meeting, we'll be getting an idea of what their sequence looks like and getting a really good understanding of how they plan to execute the work, and it'll be their responsibility to truly execute it, it's just gonna be our job to make sure that they're doing it up to the specifications that you guys expect from them. And that's all spelled out in the plan.
That just, that Jeff designed, okay.
Yeah, right.
So Jeff is in the middle of this as well.
Yeah, 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 Jeff's doing the designer part and then we'll be doing the actual engineering on the construction project part. Thank you.
Uh, do you go with that? I'm good with Adam not having to do it.
Don't go.
I don't wanna be up there doing all the tasks.
Well, I know, that's, I mean, this is what we're here for, so, that's, that's great. Okay, um, do we have a motion to approve a master service agreement with benchmark engineering?
I'll make a motion to approve the master service agreement with benchmark engineering as submitted by Charles for services related to Mako Road Task.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Chad, may we have a roll call vote please? Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan. Yes. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
May I ask one question?
Yep.
This specifically the Mako Road project that we discussed along with other projects.
I, I thought, do we wanna do this and I thought the same thing, I really did. We usually do master service agreements and then they do a work order for each project. You wanna talk about that, Adam?
Yeah, so we would just sign a, an N S A and then later on we will approve, uh, you, the board, will approve Task Order Number One, which will involve T, uh, Mako Road.
But what we're saying is, do we wanna amend this to?
Yeah. To, and other projects.
Okay. I'll just, well, let's just approve, I, I make a motion, we approve a M S A with benchmark engineering.
That we may need to look at the agreement here, cause I think, does it say specifically Mako one here?
I didn't see it.
It does not, it's a generalized N S A.
Is it, okay, okay, well, that's what it should be.
Yeah, it should say the other project.
Yep, okay, alright.
Yeah, they just outlined a fee schedule to anticipate.
Uh, for services related to road task orders. Right. So we're just, um. Okay, I need you to just read it. We're, we're amending it to delete the words, "The Mako."
Yes, related to.
Okay, I, I make a motion that we approve the master service agreement with benchmark engineering as amended for services related to Rogue Task Order Project.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd, without amendment on it, we have a second by Chad, still, okay. Let's do the roll call vote here. Are we good? Yep. Okay. Howard Haggard.
Yes, as amended.
Diane Jordan. Yes, as amended. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes, as amended.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
We have a motion here. Good, good, good. Okay, um, item number six, poli, uh, discussion, consideration, impossible action, approval, rejection, amendment. And/or postponement, purchase of two vehicles for the Ho Chi Minh Police Department through a competitive bid process with three bids submitted for review from Carter Chevrolet Agency, Malloy Fleet, and James Hodge. Um, I've looked at these, I've chatted with the staff about this, um, Chief, do you wanna tell us your thoughts on this?
I do, so Adam and I just had a lot of discussion on the purchase of these fleet vehicles and in an effort to try to get the best product and be mindful of the tax dollars instead of just going with the state current contract, we also took bids for quotes from three vendors and were able to come up with a vendor that was the lower bid, cheaper than the state contract, um, has offered to do free oil changes for up to a hundred and twenty thousand miles on each vehicle that we purchased from them, and they will also deliver the vehicles from wherever they're getting them, deliver them to the outfitter and deliver them back to us at no cost.
Wow.
That's local.
Yeah. Okay. Staff recommendation. And the staff recommendation was to go with, with, uh, James Hodge. From the staff recommendation to go with them for the fact that, that they saved the, the town money and offering the additional services at no cost.
I think that's good.
Am I reading this right, Chief, that their original bid come in at the fifty-two, did they come back at the fifty-one?
Yes, sir.
Is that the way I'm reading it?
Yes, sir.
Clarify that. That's good that they come back, geez.
So we found that, uh, the local dealership, uh, James Hodge came in under, they were not only the lowest, but they provided additional services for the free oil changes and delivery of these two up there.
Well, and then you guys wanna discuss this, Brenda?
Very pleased that Jack and, and then the dealership here were able to.
Well, we said this before and we'll say it again, we wanna do business locally when we can, and if it makes sense.
And that's what they said, that's what they said to us, is that they want us to have their business, so.
Right.
My Ho Chi Minh had their business.
I, well, this is pertaining to the vehicle, but what's the cost to outfit it?
That's, that's coming out.
Oh, okay, okay.
Look under Dana Supply.
I got you.
Okay.
I would make a motion if there's one more question.
I have one more question, Chief. I have one more question to Chief. Is this the truck that's coming to suit us?
Uh, that is the one that we specced, it actually comes with a two-inch lift. Okay. And the other bidders, to get the two-inch lift, it was an additional cost.
Okay.
So we got exactly what we spent for way less money than originally did it.
Good deal.
And is it for, it's for one or two bids?
Two bids.
Two.
Okay. So the, feel like it's sensible to go ahead and do two now versus one, two, or the second one when you need it?
Well, there's.
Either that or a bicycle for your.
There's quite a bit of time in.
Well, I mean, one for sure, I mean, I know he's got one.
Getting through the upholders, it's, it, uh, five to six weeks ordering the, the parts, and it could be a month, two months to actually get it outfitted. Okay. So, we're ready to send it one, we wanted to send two, that way maybe we'll get one of them back, all the other ones being outfitted, so we would have one right to go.
I make a motion.
So are they saying, are they, are they outfitted in Oklahoma City or where?
That's what I'm expecting.
Sounds good.
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 I make a motion to accept the, uh, offer from James Hodge Chevrolet.
Okay, we have a motion by Brenda to accept the, uh, Hodge bid, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second by Todd, may we have a roll call vote please? Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan. Yes. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, item number seven, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment and/or postponement on the approval of the purchase of law enforcement public safety vehicle mounted equipment for the uplifting of two police vehicles from Dana Safety Supply LLC, a supplier with the state contract number S W zero one four two, at a cost of twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. To answer your question.
Each, each.
Yes, each. And then you, under your tab, you've got every, you know, light bars, push bumper, you know what those are for.
I read through the whole thing and I think I understand about ninety percent of it, but I did have two questions.
Ninety percent of it?
About ninety percent.
It was a lot.
That's a lot.
There's a lot of reading.
That's a lot, lot that, uh, us old Plankton folks, non-law enforcement officers don't have a clue what this is. But I did have a question on the, the.
What page are you on?
I'm on, I'm on page four, at the very bottom. Cargo deck with drawers, supermax.
That's a rear, under the rear, rear seat cargo.
Oh, well, under the rear seat, okay.
Rifle, body armor, anything.
I figured it was something like that, but I didn't know it was behind the seat, or under the seat, or in the, in the bed of the truck, so, okay. Cool.
So rather than being in the bed of the truck, I knew we had to purchase a bed cover.
Right.
For additional cost, that just puts it inside the cabin vehicles or secure.
Okay. And the next one I have is on page five at the very top, horizontal sliding window.
That's on the prisoner petition.
But that was my next question, somewhere in here, there is a cage.
Yes, sir.
Between front and back seat, okay. Okay, I'm good.
And they also have questions on?
Prisoner petition.
Petition, yes.
Well, I'm thrilled that, uh, Chief Williamson has some experience and knows what to look for on the vehicle that he wants, so.
Well, we, we did look for local vendors and we don't have any, so we're just gonna head and wait with the state contract. This is not a real elaborate setup, I do have, uh, some diagrams that show where the lights will be, if y'all wanna see those.
This does have all the radios and everything, radio, you know, that radar package.
Chief talked to him about, now, I'm good with that. I wanted you to, um, share with the board what you shared with me about, you know, letting them have their little computer desk in the car and some of the rushing out for that.
This also includes the mobile computer in the vehicle, the console, the mounting bracket, all of that stuff is in this outfitting bid. The more we put in the car, the more time officers can spend in there, of course, it's having to come to the, to the station and do reports or whatever paperwork they need to do. So it's essentially a mobile office, since we don't have a station at this point, keeps them in the field where we need them to be. That's where I wanted to spend at least ninety percent of your time.
Well, I, I didn't notice, but you feel like you need camera system at some point, or is this gonna be?
We will be asking for taser body cam as a bundle package later on.
Okay.
And that will give us the body camera capabilities.
That's a body cam, does, does this have a dash cam package in it, or do you think we need to add it?
To me, if you have the body cam, I mean.
You're good.
Where you mount it on your body will capture a lot of what you see as if you were driving the vehicle. And then when they get out, I mean, if we want any car, it's just more money.
And that's you, you're the expert.
Well, there's, you know, there's the.
What I want is you and your officers to be safe out there, and if they have a dash cam, it's another grant, go for it, I mean, we're.
Yeah, I mean, if, if I can work with the tax on, on that, they're a sole source vendor, if I can work on them and get a better deal, if we got the N car on top of the body camera and the taser, I'll definitely pitch them.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, I think it's a good, good liability consideration.
Keeps everybody honest, you know.
Now, do the county, do, do the counties have, do they have camera systems in theirs, I know the power control, does, does the county and?
As far as I know, most of them just run the body cameras, just for the cost factors.
FYI, the county, just last month, Sheriff's Department went in for, what, thirty body cams, I think it was thirty, there were questions. Through a grant.
Okay.
To get their body cams up ready.
And we, we are also seeking grants to help fund those, you know.
Great.
Are they good with bells and whistles?
Yes, I'll consider it.
Just, just an FYI, I guess, clarify, this does not include graphics on the vehicle, that's something we still gotta figure out.
We're still working on, we're gonna improve this for America, we're gonna do the vehicle graphics.
Chief and I had a, a brief discussion on what those look like, you know, what the graphics look like on the vehicle, and so he's gonna bring some things to look at, and we may do a temporary graphic, um, before we look at what, what does our brand look like for later, even if it's for a year or whatever, but at least, a logo with town of Ho Chi Minh police on it, it gets it done. So, Chief, do you have anything else on that?
I do not.
Adam, are you good?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So that Diane Safety Supplies. State vendor, are they the only supplier?
No, there's a handful of outfitters, it's, it's really, you can go onto the Oklahoma Department, uh, I'm sorry, the Okla, Oklahoma, uh, state contracts through the enterprise system that they have that's online, and you can just kinda type in several different types of keywords and you can pull up all different types of services that are provided, and, uh, so since obviously we're doing work here in Oklahoma, we pulled up one of the state contracts, and this was a reputable vendor that has been recommended by other police departments across the state of Oklahoma, and.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And I know that twenty-four thousand dollars seems like a lot, and this is not an elaborate setup, this is kind of an intermediate, just, you know, trying to waste money where we don't need to, to spend it on what would be as visible as we can.
We want you to have what you need.
That's right.
We want you to be as safe as possible out there, I don't wanna cut corners and be unsafe or something.
Well, you're the expert at this, we hired you to, to do the job, so I'm confident that you made the best decision on this, so, sounds good to me.
You may, you may add to any more discussion? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we, uh, approve the purchase of the law enforcement public safety vehicle mounted equipment as are listed by the police chief for twenty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars, seventy-five each, for each vehicle.
Okay, we have a motion by Howard, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Brenda, may we have a roll call vote please? Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan. Yes. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, in the forum. Okay, we're gonna get through this, so, uh. Our motion carries. So Helen can get something on her throat. Item number eight, discussion, consideration, possible action, approval, rejection, amendment and/or postponement on the approval of a one-year contract with the offender dated information system, Otis, including an initial implementation cost of ninety-one hundred dollars and the annual support fee of fifteen hundred dollars. Chief, you wanna, by your standing, you wanna explain that to us?
Yes, ma'am, so, this is basically a records management system through the Department of Public Safety through Oklahoma. It will give us the opportunity to share and view all the information, everybody in McCarran County and every law enforcement agency is on this, through our system. It will work with our mobile computers, desktop computers, so if we need to research a suspect, run a criminal history, we're able to do all that through here, and then any other contact that these people have had with the other agencies that are on this system, we get all of their history. So if there's a crime city committing crimes and they're suspect, they're, and they're in the system, we get all that information.
Like what's on this also?
I'm not sure about this.
Would you find out for us?
Yes, ma'am. I bet they are.
Do you have a meeting set up?
Uh.
Or didn't get canceled?
It got canceled, but they are rescheduled.
Okay, good. Okay, everybody good with the, uh, Otis? We got a one-time setup fee, but that's what happens when you start a new account. Okay, may we have a motion? Anything else, Chief, you good?
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else?
I would make the motion
You have a motion by Brenda?
To approve the one-year contract with Otis at a cost of ninety-one hundred dollars and an annual support fee of fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Brenda, may we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Todd, may we have a roll call vote please? Howard Haggard.
Yes.
Diane Jordan. Yes. Todd McDaniel.
Yes.
Chad Sargent.
Yes.
Brenda Walters.
Yes.
Okay, our motion carries. Item number nine, uh, we're not gonna go to nine.
I was gonna ask Karissa.
Yep. Hey, Karissa, will you answer if they're ready, man, if not, okay, Karissa.
Is your, is your Dell computer system, that's in, the computers come in the outfitting package, and so this is just the software. Okay. And then that package you have to, separate, yeah, okay.
So I would like to thank the, the board, well, this really gets the wheels moving to, to get officers on the.
Literally.
Totally, yeah.
It, it's hard to get our cars and our horses when we have a horse but no cart, and we gotta have a driver for the cart, and it's, it's, we knew it was gonna be tough starting from scratch.
We appreciate yous.
Yeah, we're excited to have you.
Off topic for the agenda, we have had lots of interest in officers coming to reserve for us, and we're now, uh, we are starting to compile this.
Can you get him on by springboard?
We're gonna try.
How long, how long do you estimate the, uh, your vehicle to take, is it gonna be a several-month project or?
It could be one to two months for them to, uh, the vendor is working with us pretty strongly, since we're a brand-new department that's trying to get these pushed out so we can get officers in, some of them working with us trying to fit us in where they have some cancellations.
Oh, that's good.
Or, I think you said this, just to clarify, the, these vehicles are somewhere down in Texas, are these trucks available?
They were sitting on a lot in Richardson, Texas.
Oh, that's, that's really nice.
They're available immediately to go to Oklahoma City.
How are we doing in there, Karissa?
They're almost ready.
Okay, well, as long as I'm talking police, we're still on the agenda, so we'll be good. So we won't take an official recess. Till you're getting your feet wet?
I have.
Okay, meeting some good people?
Lots of good people.
Meeting any, not good people?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay.
I've had, uh, some very good support, I know, local business owners, all the local law enforcement, and they have been tremendous. I like the whole county is excited, um, well, I mean, I know. Well, I mean, I know they're wanting us to get online so we can alleviate their calls.
Absolutely.
If that's what it takes to get their support, I'll take it.
Have you, have you seen the police chiefs in vain? Have you seen his vehicle?
I haven't.
He's got a pickup with some graphics. It's, it's out, it's outside.
Yeah?
I saw him at the commissioner's one time, and those graphics are, they're wonderful.
What, what do they look like, Howard?
I can't even describe it. It's got, it's got the black and white US flag kinda faded in, value of police. It's a good-looking pickup truck.
Well, fortunately, I say I haven't met him yet.
I only met him at the commissioner's meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but.
We're not keeping you on the hot seat.
So before I close, I would like to say that I have had some very good support from Adam and Julie and Carissa.
Simulations being completed.
All right, thank you, Chief. Okay, um. We have tabled item four.
There were, that is Shirelli's, and this is RAP. Okay, RAP was missing the terms and conditions that are signed, but they, they.
They agreed to them, they just didn't get them noted around?
They don't have them in the package.
Oh, okay.
So, but we can, you can make the recommendation that you will accept their, one thing about their.
On.
Contention on, but one thing, other thing that they, there was a problem with on that is their, their number, their tabulated number on their bid item. Was higher than what the actual, once you go through the numbers and re-tabulate it, so it came out to four oh four. I wrote it on the outside. Tabulated off there, it's right there. They tabulate four oh four, nine thirty, so they were five thousand lower, four, five thousand lower, four thousand lower. So they need to confirm that that four thou, that four thousand, they're agreed, because their tabulated number doesn't match what their actual. Cost items are.
Okay.
But they need to have their terms and condition to the town by four thirty Friday, and then they'll accept.
Okay, and then on this one?
Or you will accept it. That's my recommendation.
Okay, okay, your recommendation, you said it again, terms and conditions to the town by Wednesday. Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so what we've got here is a recommendation to accept the RAP bid. Subject to their terms and conditions.
Being submitted.
To be submitted by Friday at four thirty PM. Are you good with that, Adam? By Friday at four thirty PM, verified by notary.
That's correct.
And that their total is four hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. You all good with that?
Okay, can you, can you repeat that?
That we would accept the RAP construction bid contingent on. Terms and conditions verified by notary public. Submitted by four thirty PM on Friday. And.
This Friday, February twenty-first?
Yes, ma'am.
And the total is four hundred and four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. And nine cents.
Nine thirty and four cents?
Nine cents.
Nine cents, okay. Good, got it.
I do have a question before we do anything, and I apologize, Adam. I thought about it halfway over here. Don't knowing what these prices are gonna be. You gave us that sheet, estimated prices on about four or five roads, but what, do you have that handy? Do you know what that, what, what that and what that number was for make-o-road that we estimated versus this?
Two thirty-five, five fifty-three, seventy-five.
How much? Two thirty-five?
Two fifty-five.
Two fifty-five.
No, two thirty-five, fifty, uh, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Now, we're two thirty-five versus four oh eight, so we're well over that estimated price.
And I have the overs and unders for each of those if you want to.
My question is, is it just, is, is the overs justified in your opinion?
My only problem is.
Depending on prices and.
Depending on prices and what the availability is in this area, that's it. It's, it's, it's hard to, for any, I mean, for me to tell you what a price is, like in northeastern Oklahoma, Oklahoma. Or southeastern, I, I, I have to do a number of projects to see, you know. I went by a bid tabulation and using ODOT's numbers.
Okay.
And typically, ODOT's numbers are area correlated, and then. They're typically thirty percent higher than everybody else. These seem a little high to me.
Well, I do know ODOT bid here, when they did get a bid on this part, only one company bid on it, and they were twenty percent over what ODOT, ODOT's estimated.
They went back and renegotiated.
Yeah.
But if they only get one, they have to go back and even on overs, then they have to, because they can't go with just one.
Right.
We have two. My bid on. Where's my bid? I, I. There's a, there's a couple of them that are way high. But they're both in the same categories. They both were high.
They both were what, Jeff?
They were both high.
Both high.
In the same categories.
Yeah. Not all the same categories, but virtually, there were, you know.
Where they were high, they were high in the same category.
Yes.
How do you get these estimates? Well, no, let me finish, but I'm, I'm saying these estimates that we originally got that were half, almost half. The cost of what we're getting today, the question is those averages that we received. And I'm, I'm assuming it was Garber that helped us with that?
The original estimates from the presentation I did for the board a couple of months back were estimates provided from Jever.
So my question is, is that a, is that an average that just accelerated over time? Or is it, or is it a situation where we're in a convenience category where they realize that, you know, we don't have a lot of options? So cushioning and padding a bid for convenience seems to be the pressure point that. Communities like ours have to deal with when we don't have a lot of options. So we either, you know, to table it and try to find more bids that are more competitive. And not rush into it, or we, or we take this bid that seems to be high.
Okay, historically, if we were, I mean, you can, you can reject these bids and we can go back out for rebid. And, you know, these are now published. These are gonna be known for everybody to know that they were rejected. Because here technically, typically what ODOT will do, if they're more than a certain percentage over the engineer's bid. Or the engineer's estimate, it's an automatic, it's usually twenty percent that they'll automatically reject. Okay? But if I go by, ODOT has a historical bid, they will tabulate, you go in. And it, it has it for every month of the year, for every bid that they do. And then they also correlate it to your region. So it is more in line, like stuff down here will be more expensive than they will be in the, because of the sheer number of businesses or suppliers in the city. Transportation costs, you're also dealing with Arkansas, Texas, you know, you can get from those three areas. But historically, if we go out for rebid, it most likely will come in higher. Okay, and. I, I mean, I, I, my, my job is to advise you, I'm not making a decision for you. This was our first one. We were very unsure about what kind of bids we were gonna get.
Okay.
Because of the cost and stuff, even though we were correlating stuff with ODOT. That's a hit, miss, because this area surely just did not have the number of bids. That are in other areas. There were a couple of areas that I was. A little shocked to see that the number was that much higher. Because these are items that shouldn't have been, like the clearing and graving was. Four thousand dollars more, unclassified excavation, which we're not gonna use, was twenty-five thousand dollars more than what I. I mean, well, we're gonna use the twenty-five, the unclassified excavation to do the ditches. And that was twenty-five thousand dollars more on this one, on the RAP. And twenty-seven thousand dollars more on the Shirelli. Shirelli had a fifty-two thousand dollar mobilization while, while RAP had a twenty-five thousand mobilization.
Jeff, did we ever receive any communications from the bid websites that we had published to? That there could potentially be more bidders in the future, people that may have missed the deadline for bid sale? Or may have missed the required pre-bid conference?
They, I mean, I've tried to contact them and talk to them, and all they're concerned about is wanting to know our list of who has actually applied for, or requested. I've been to the meeting, they want the bid, they want the bid tabulation and the list of bidders. They, they haven't.
Indicated that they would.
No, yeah.
Does that show on that, the blind items there, does it show what the bid was on the ODOT-approved rock?
I will, I can show you what I pulled off the, you know, let me hide this one column since they didn't bid. Makes it a little easier for us to compare. Okay, so the, the, the rock. The TVSC, the base. My unit cost was thirty-one dollars a yard, a ton. They did fifty and sixty-three.
Okay, now, well, I wanna make sure I'm understanding this right. The engineer, the specs called for an ODOT-approved material.
Right. We, every, all the, all the items have to be ODOT-approved specification, ODOT specification.
And the closest place to get that is Sawyer, correct?
I, I do not know that answer, because they can get it, they can, they can meet that specification even from Arkansas.
Right. Well, I guess, I guess, it's my understanding that that is the closest place you can get this ODOT-approved rock. So I guess my question is, can we, is it possible to get something closer, maybe in-town, rock here closer? If it can meet that ODOT-approved, then that, I mean, being in fact, they're not bringing it in from Sawyer. That would greatly reduce the cost of.
Well, the problem is that we would have to be renegotiating with them, and then that kinda negates the bidding process.
Yeah.
Okay.
We can't, typically, you can't go back in and start line item and stuff out. Unless we specified that we did, we were going to do that in the bid documents. And since we didn't specify that we would.
Right.
Do you feel that if we were to reject these bids and repackage our bid requests? Could you give us kind of a general timeline, and then also if you think that these bids would come back lower?
It's hard to, it's hard to say that they, the bids would come back lower. I can, a couple of things that I would do, because they all bragged about it. I would break out more specifically the patch items. Instead of combining them all into one, I would do a line item for each of the, the patch items. So they would specifically be bidding each item instead of trying to guesstimate themselves. That's, that was another thing that they were, I mean, the patching alone was. The RAP was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars more than mine, and Shirelli was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That, I mean, it's all in that item right there. That's the, that's the item that they're. That threw all the money in.
Could you explain that second item?
The patching item. Okay, the patching is a full-depth patch. Basically, it includes asphalt, aggregate, excavation, and sawcutting. There's four items that are included in that. Basically, they pay for it as the cost of per ton of asphalt. Even ODOT has, has done this for thirty years. Each of them had questions and concerns and saying that they didn't like it that way. And questioned it, and I was like, well, that's why we've done it with ODOT for as long as I've been doing this. But I can tell that they were, they were hedging their bets on this because of how high those numbers are.
We were fifteen hundred and sixty-one feet?
Here's, here's some, some thoughts and ideas. I mean, we can take this one and see how it goes. We can reject it and start over. It doesn't always come back higher. It has come back lower, as you know, on the ODOT project. Came back lower, so it could come back lower. The other thing is take it, and on the next ones, because we have more to do, is be more aggressive in soliciting people to bid. Adam?
What do you think, I, I don't like how this has gone over our original cost estimate. What do you think if we repackage this bid? I mean, it's gonna put us back on our timing for all of our road maintenance projects, whenever it comes to asphalt anyways. Not our gravel roads maintenance, because we have local contractors and the expenditures aren't so high, we have to go to bid. But as far as asphalt roadways go, it'll push us on our schedule back some, but just in interest to save the town money. I mean, once, once a couple of weeks, you know, let's, let's bid it out. Jeff, what's the required bid line, bid timeframe?
It's twenty-one days from the, the point, I mean, I, I, I will concur with Adam that I, because I have the nature. We're a hundred and fifty, roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars over. So you're more than forty percent greater, and you're past the twenty percent from the engineer's estimate. Plus the fact that everybody is higher than the engineer's estimate. And that is typically a red flag, and that it automatically, especially that high. I would suggest we, because that also cuts into your money of other projects.
Exactly. That's where I would want it to go to.
And, you know, we, we have, well, we, we went down, we've been down this road before with our short-term rental. And so, you know, I think that it's in our best interest to be as physically responsible as we can. To go ahead and make sure and try to see if we can save some money. I mean, yes, we're delaying, you know, a project that, you know, that people wanna see completed.
Yeah.
But we've got a responsibility to this.
Maiko has a road already.
Yes.
It's not like they don't have a road.
I think.
The, the, the thing that I'm a little bit hap, I would be happy to, is like. This is not delaying this a long term. We're talking, the, this delay is, we'll be reopening bids in thirty days. So you're not, the, the prices should not drastically change in that thirty-day period. Because it's not like you're delaying it a year. You know, if we go more than a year or so, yeah, then I would say no. But if we're going, I mean, this is basically gonna be re-advertised, and we'll send it back out and go, these, all bids were rejected, and it's out for rebid.
Now, my question, Jeff, is if when you, when you do that, will these two companies, will they potentially rebid and try to come in more competitive?
Are any of the companies here?
No, one was Texas C and the other one was.
Okay, well, typically, they, they, they will. I know that the, the one that fell out was very going, I wanna be in your next ones, I'm gonna be in your next ones. So basically, we'll just, you know, tell everybody the bids were rejected. They were, you know, higher than the engineer's estimate and ODOT's estimate. And, and tell them, you know, next time.
See if you can trim some fats.
You need to sharpen your pencils and. But a hundred and fifty thousand.
Jeff, can we look at this and see if there's something that we can do to take some of that guesswork out for them?
Well, one of the things I am gonna do is I, instead of having everything lumped into these, the patching item. I will break those items out so that it'll be more specific. Plans won't change. Plans won't change, other than I change the summary of pay items to break these items out to be, to try to. Break it out to a little bit more digestible ones that they can do. But I, I do suggest that we, we reject these bids.
No pressure, Charles. You wanna add anything to this with your background and?
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was okay for me to do this.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, yeah. Well, actually, it's not, unless we ask for it.
You know, you know a lot of this too.
That's what I said. I'd be interested to hear your thoughts.
Your ag base, it's paid for by the ton, not the cubic yard?
It's paid by the ton.
Okay.
Well, actually, technically, no. Well, technically, it is paid by the ton because it's under the item of. Well, actually, technically, no. Well, technically, it is paid by the ton because it's under the item of, um, suit, the, the S3.
Okay.
It's included in the cost of S3, the, the, S3, ag base, sawcut, and excavation is all in that one item. But it shouldn't be that drastic. I mean, they went for patching at six hundred dollars, I mean, to make, um, asphalt six hundred and ten dollars to five hundred and fifty-one dollars.
The, the ag base, uh, being outside of sixty dollars per cubic yard isn't terrible in this area. Seventy dollars is probably what I would expect, and that sounds really, really high. But he was right, Sawyer is the closest that you can get ODOT-grade ag base. You can get TBSC here, but it has, it doesn't pass the LA abrasion test that is required to be sufficiently fresh. So you gotta go a long way to get ag base, essentially. The, uh, TBSC that we have on there, that would be from here, so they might be able to sharpen their bid on that.
Their bid on that one was thirty, I, mine was thirty-one dollars a ton, they did fifty and sixty-three.
Okay.
So...
And forty probably is really sticker around.
I would, I would, somewhere between thirty and forty dollars a ton is acceptable.
Yeah. And then whenever we're looking at, like, uh, the, the clearing and grubbing, there is a little bit of widening that needs to be done in that V-bottom ditch. So I would expect that to be pretty expensive. Uh, there, there's probably gonna be a little bit of tree removal to get that road out to the width. That if we really want a twenty-two-foot typical section, it's gonna take some work. It's not, we can't just pay the twenty-two-foot typical section at this point.
We're not paving the twenty-two-foot, we're paving the, basically, the only thing that we're doing to, for the clearing and grubbing is to construct enough to do the V-bottom ditches. We're not, we're not expanding the footprint of the, the road.
All right, so if it's eighteen foot, it's eighteen foot.
Eighteen foot, and then you're basically going two foot outside to do your V-bottom ditch, so that we would, 'cause we don't want to do all this work and not address the drainage.
Yeah, okay.
So we're not going from eighteen to twenty-two, then another four feet. We're not doing that. We're, we're existing footprint, two foot on each side, and that's the clearing and grubbing.
I was under the impression that we might wanna stripe it at some point.
I, I, I don't feel that, uh, residential roads need to be striped, because that also creates a maintenance nightmare, 'cause once you stripe it, then it has to remain striped.
Okay, well, that fixes our twenty-two-foot problem. Yeah, I, I would agree. I think for prudence for the town, it makes more sense to wait and, and just give it another shot. The unfortunate part is that it, these guys did do bids, and so now their competitors will know what their values were. And that's negative impact on their contractors.
Unfortunately, it is.
And, and that's the only, uh, negative part of going that route is, uh, it's not friendly to them, but...
But their con, their competitors will also know that they were rejected because of this, of that.
And we're going back with a little bit of a different product.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to, I am going to expand the items to, instead of including catch-all, to break them out.
Using the TBSC, pros and cons?
The TBSC is, uh, it's, it's the same gradation, uh, same rock size as the ag-based type A.
Yeah.
But, um, the ag base, you wanna get a really dense compaction on to put your asphalt on. That TBSC, the reason it's called something different is because you really just want that to grade off the edge of the asphalt.
You're not gonna get the compaction with it, because it will, it will actually, uh, start breaking down when you try to get the, the... The ag base is a, is usually a gr, a granite or something that can get, can take the heavy loads. The ag ba, the TB, TBSC is usually a limestone base, you know? And so over time, it breaks down by driving, and that's where you get the, you just see gravel roads with dust and everything. That's the, that's the, been breaking down.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
That's it.
Do we have a motion to leave it tabled as is?
I think we have to move to reject the bids.
I make a motion, we reject both bids.
We have a motion by Howard. We have a second by Chad. And we have a roll call vote, please.
Howard Hackett?
Yes.
Diane Jordan?
Yes.
Todd Daniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Item number nine, discussion, consideration, possible action to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Howard. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Howard Hackett?
Yes.
Diane Jordan? Todd Daniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brenda Walters?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries at five fifty-five PM.